Milan's.
Okay. Okay. Matt, so you guys ready? Alright, well. We're gonna call this meeting to order. This is the Kensington Town Council meeting for December eighteenth and we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands on a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the moment of silence. If anybody has anyone that we should lift up, please let me know. I would lift up Kathy Byers and her family. Kathy lost her son last week. Kathy's a local Realtor. Realtor for her family. Anyone else? If we could just bow our head for a moment. Okay, thank you very much. Alright, council, you all received the minutes for the November thirteenth town council meeting. And then the minutes for our special closed meeting on the fifteenth. I saw Anne had just a couple of notes about the minutes and Susan resent them. I don't recall seeing anything else. So if we can. Were you okay with the changes that she made?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, we can get a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes from the council meeting held last November. What was the date?
Thirteenth. Is there a second?
We have set up a separate motion.
Yeah, this is for just the town council meeting for the thirteenth. Second for Darren. Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. We get a motion for the closed session minute, meeting minutes?
Do I move that we approve the minutes from the closed session of November fifteenth?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move down to the mayor and town council. We want to acknowledge that we did have the closed session on the fifteenth. To speak up with our town attorney. And ongoing negotiations with the the flats, which is the one oh five oh nine Summit Ventures. We'll see developments. Okay, and then we want to. Matt, I'm gonna let you do B.
Sure. So we just want to acknowledge that the staff is planning to present to the mayor and council an ordinance out of January eighth, twenty twenty five town council meeting, which will propose the sale of thirty four twenty Piers Mall Road, also known as Joseph Park. The council will set a public hearing date, most likely for the February meeting, which public comment will be requested. And then the council will make a decision on whether proceed on that ordinance.
So that we put it in March, correct? The March meeting?
Yeah, our standards usually to keep the pub, if the public hearing open an extra month, so we're probably looking at if the council moves forward with the sale in April.
Okay.
Could I ask a question on that? So Matt, I know you and I've had some back and forth and I didn't have time to respond to your last message, but to prepare for that, I still think there is additional analysis that would be helpful to have in the public record around the financial implications and the case that you were putting forward, but also the as we talked about a few meetings ago, the other ways that town needs could be financed, whether that's bond, tax, or delaying projects, so that there's full information available. And then, and then I know that you're also working to pull together background information from the archives and some other analysis. So I would like to request that all of that be brought forward to in the public record.
Okay.
Do you want that in the January meeting for the?
It's not gonna happen in the introduction. So we won't discuss it in the introduction. It would happen in the public hearing phase in February. So in January, all we're doing is introducing the ordinance. All we would do is we wouldn't even discuss it. It's just introduced. And then in February, we would have a public hearing. And then our our typical response is to keep the public hearing open an extra month. So we could continue the public hearing through March. And then the council would make a decision on whether to proceed with the ordinance or not in April.
But I'm asking, when would the information that Anne is requesting be available?
Not until February.
The February hearing?
Yeah.
But we, obviously, I think the council would like to see that earlier.
Sure.
Than than at the meeting? So does that work for you?
Yeah, if we can get it.
Towards the end of January?
And then, okay. And then also make sure that it's available and for the public to see so that they can.
That could go out with the meeting agenda.
Okay.
Is it possible for maybe you and Anne to actually, I think there's been a little bit of confusion about what exactly you want to see? So I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, and if other members have, we had some discussion about this before in the October.
Yeah, but I think there's just a little bit of confusion.
I'm happy to, too. I think I had similar questions.
Yeah, I mean, there's only so much we can talk about. You know, obviously, if if the town were to borrow funds, there was really only one avenue. We discussed that. It's the tax increase that we're kind of struggling with. That's a much larger discussion that has come through a budget forum. What we can do is provide base numbers on what a one cent, two cent, three cent property tax increase. That's something very simple we can provide. If you want something more detailed than that, it's really more of a budget discussion, kind of figuring out where we are with the CIP, kind of what we need to look at, the projects we have in front of us. It's a much larger discussion. It's not something that we're gonna be able to provide in the next three or four weeks.
Okay. That sound good?
Though we do have a lot of that information available from the last budget forum, you know. So anyway, I'm happy to you know, talk with you further and something Nate would participate too, just to outline what is feasible and what is highest value to inform the conversation.
Okay.
Okay, I think it'd just be really helpful since there's just this, you know, confusion about what exactly how it's to be written and how you want to see it prepared and presented. Okay, good. So you should probably plan to do that early January, you know, so he can have that ready. So the whole council could look at it by the end of January?
Yeah.
Okay.
If that, okay. Okay, alright, well, we have a special guest in the meeting today. And is everybody here that you want here? Yes. Hi Dennis, how are you? Good. Your, your son just dragged you to, dragged you to a meeting? I know, what, you haven't been to one in a really long time. It's been a very long time. So I know you are, does everybody know Dennis McCurdy? Dennis is a longtime business owner. His office is on Perry Avenue. And he owns some property that he's been, I think he's still on Frankly Pizza, or Frankly Pizza is, yeah, that little shopping center. And some other property around town that he's, I think that's the only one now, isn't it? That in your office?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so, but Dennis has been a longtime business owner here in the town and I feel like I've known him forever since I've gotten involved in town politics and, but he started a the Kensington Business District Association, KBDA, who was very helpful in getting the kickstart of introducing our businesses to especially after we allowed alcohol. That was a big, big thing of where of inviting new businesses into town and to talk me into providing dumpster service to Frankly Pizza and Bedumic Sweets. Thanks Dennis. I, I, I managed the building next door and they had no place for a dumpster or recycling. So we worked out a deal where they, they now have that for, for cost. So we don't make any money off of that. So anyway, so I'll get to manage that. Anyway, but what we have for you tonight is a little proclamation and a gift as you are preparing to I guess, close KBDA or have it unfolded with Kensington Ken, I believe that's folded in there and that's very exciting. And is there other items? Are they being donated to the archives for our own records or? Okay. Okay, do you want to read that first or you just, just announce who you are at the podium?
Alyssa Salasale, I am Kensington Road Bookshop. I've known Dennis for twenty-two years. He was one of the first people I met when I opened my shop and I've known him as a, a business leader, as a business neighbor and, and as a friend. And I want to say thank you for all your support over the years. So I have two letters. This is from Kensington Historical Society. It says, Dear Mr. McCurdy, the Board of Directors of the Kensington Historical Society wishes to join with the town of Kensington in expressing our appreciation for your years of work with the Kensington Business District Association and your contributions to the quality of life in our town. We particularly appreciate the work that KBDA did to write and publish Kensington a picture history. There are many residents of town who cherish, cherish their copies. For those of us who weren't around at the time to be able to buy a copy, we very much appreciate you permitting KHS to reprint the book digitally so that it will be available for all. It's a fun read and is also widely used as a resource document. I've personally enjoyed the times we've been able to talk. So I've been able to hear tales about the history of the Kensington business community. You know, a lot of interesting facts about our business district. KHS is looking forward to working with you to preserve these stories through our oral history project so that they are available for generations to come. Along those lines, we are so pleased that you've expressed interest in donating, donating the KBDA records to the Kensington Town Archives so that we will have the KBDA collection available for future researchers, historians, and interested town residents. KHS and the Town Archives look forward to working with you on both of those projects so that we have the history of your contribution to the town saved for the future. On behalf of KHS and the Town Archives, we thank you for the many ways that you've contributed to our community. Sincerely, Catherine DeWitt, President, Kensington Historical Society. I also have a little letter from Kensington Ken. Dear Mr. McCurdy, on behalf of the Kensington Ken Board of Directors and Members, we thank you for your many years of work with the Kensington Business District Association. Life for Kensington Town residents and business owners has been made richer by your efforts in uniting the community, organizing events that have become well-loved traditions, advocating for the common good and helping those less fortunate. Thank you for entrusting Kensington Ken to carry on the KBDA mission. We hope you will remain as an advisor and member as we deeply respect your leadership and contributions you have made to the business community. Tyler Whitmore, President, Kensington Ken. So thank you.
Thank you. You, Ellie? I, I can say that we were able to use the Kensington History Book when we put up the train signs. There was some disagreement from the gentleman who was helping us with that, how Kensington was named. And we were able to use the book to show him how Mr. Brainerd, you know, what he came up, or Brainerd Warner came up with. Basically, in the back rooms of CSX, probably passing out cigars and getting them to agree to changing from Noel Station to Kensington. So we were able to win that argument with the CSX historian. So that was kind of cool. Anyway, so thank you. Is your son coming back or? Oh, okay. Alright, well, should we wait for him? Is he picking him up from far away or just Kaiser? Okay. I think we'll hold off on the next step until he comes back. Would that be okay? Were you gonna leave? You probably can't leave because he's gone, right? You get away. Alright, so you're just stuck here. The what? I think he should go.
Let's kill some time.
For the record, please.
Yes. I haven't.
Yeah, you have to speak into the mic, so it's.
Yes.
And there was a fellow down I can't remember the street. Next street there, Paul Howard. Who was very seriously objecting to any liquor.
That was probably Frank O'Donnell on Fairgate. Or sit here, neighbor lives down. Yes, Andrew.
And Frank stood up and he said, you know, you all don't seem to understand. I live right on this main street. And somebody is gonna get too much sugar in it. And they're gonna come to my house and they're gonna feed in the bushes.
What?
He got so angry, he walked out. We had to vote right then and right fast.
Well, it passed to put it in on a referendum because we, the residents had to vote for it.
Right.
Yeah. And I admittedly, the first time it was up for referendum, voted to keep it dry. I just thought it was kind of cool that we didn't have alcohol and I never, I was young and stupid. But it just never occurred to me that the reason we don't have good alcohol, uh, good restaurants is because we don't sell beer and wine. Never occurred to me. So, but I was very young.
And now look at you, there's a beer named after you.
Yes, it has. That, that's a good story. Yeah, it was on Fosset and Sandy's.
Yeah.
Where Sandy lives now, yeah. So. Who did start it though? I know the name, but, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where was that?
That was over there where, where the, next to Manny's. That building that yeah. Yeah, you can't use it. It's
Newspapered over.
Yeah, it's newspapered over. Yeah. But yeah, he, it was kind of like a craft store that he had a bunch of things, go vacuum store. I mean, there were some other things. Yeah, I remember him. Yeah. Yeah. So.
If he didn't start it, do we still need to do the proclamation?
You got us, liquor.
Well, I think I would like to wait for his son to come back. Okay, so well, let's just go on and move down to number three since we have a family here waiting for that anyway. Okay, Matt?
Sure, council, before you this evening, we have a driveway variance for ten six oh nine Wheatley Street. The applicants, Kabir and Lindsay Archuleta, have installed a turf stone permeable concrete pavers in their driveway at a width of seventeen feet, eight and a half inches. This exceeds our allowable width within section five dash one oh seven B of the town code. There is an existing curb cut. Mr. Archuleta put down the permeable concrete pavers with the understanding that grass would go in between them and so he could park two vehicles. There's a staff report in addition to a PDF and PowerPoint from Mr. Archuleta explains some of the reasoning for his driveway width expansion pertaining to the width of Wheatley Street and some of the issues and concerns that they've had with trying to get vehicles off of the street.
I have a question?
Yes.
Yeah. I think it was in the note to the, to the council. Is the request to add? You said an apron?
Yeah, so, um.
And then keep the
Correct.
permeable surface?
The the permeable concrete pavers have already been installed.
Yeah, I saw.
So they need to file retroactive permit. The permit's on hold until the council makes a decision on whether the variance to expand the driveway width from what would be allowable at eleven feet to seventeen feet, eight and a half inches. The only concern the staff has is that there needs to be either a concrete apron or a concrete substrate beneath the first part of the driveway expansion. Basically, this will absorb the impact of the vehicles from the road into the apron. This is a standard Montgomery County policy. We follow that. As council member Anglin, you're familiar with this process as well.
Personally, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's staff's not pushing back on what's proposed. You know, the driveway is going to be expanded in the town. It's still less than twenty feet, which is the county minimum, maximum for width. We have seen twenty foot driveways in the town with a corresponding garage. This would override our current language. But this is a different type of material. So we are not opposed to it.
Talk a little bit about, I know sometimes we're concerned with crafting variances about the precedent set. But I think the idea here is that it would set up positive precedent.
We believe so. As I've mentioned to council member Bartram and the mayor, the staff would like to change the code at some point to allow driveway widths beyond eleven feet with permeable pavers. We think that's in the best interest of the town, specifically our public works team. Anytime there's a snow event, leafing, anything like that, getting vehicles off the street is, is, is a benefit to our public works team. Also, stormwater, in addition, although Wheatley is not the narrowest street in the town, it is narrow. And having two cars being able to pass is a better option than than, than only having a nine or ten foot width in between parking.
Would that get introduced?
It would be introduced at the January meeting. So.
Thank you.
And what you were describing that is that increasing the allowable width is contingent upon using permeable pavers?
Yeah, yeah. So we've seen a lot of residents looking to expand beyond the eleven feet. A lot of the residents were grandfathered in prior to that regulation going into place. Back in twenty fifteen, we amended the code that would allow a driveway width up to twenty feet if there was a corresponding garage. Obviously, the town continues to change, materials change. And, and staff would like to eventually change that language that, you know, a width beyond eleven feet would be fine if permeable pavers are used or there's some kind of, you know, event or situation that would allow a wider width, so.
Just to clarify your question that we're not changing the code in January where we would consider.
It's a very.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. Um. But now I have another.
Sure.
Well. Uh, maybe this is for the future and I just can't remember whether within a historic district, this would be subject to any special review. Then propose a change, but.
I, I can't speak to that specifically. I know there are some materials, specifically in the game of George Meyer's house that has the concrete apron and then he goes to stone and, and there's some different types of materials in the historic district.
It's not covered.
We would defer to them on the initial hop. And as long as
Yeah.
Yeah, as, as long as it's less than twenty feet in width that follows under the county regulation and technically if there was a corresponding garage, it would be complying with us. Where there's no garage here, that's the issue.
But to your question, as somebody who put one in, I have an asphalt driveway. I'm in a historic home. There's no
There's no.
The materials don't matter. What they do care about is if you have a pre-existing and granted, your house is not historic, but if they have a pre-existing driveway, they generally don't want you to expand it. We brought ours in. I know that you can replace it in kind. Different materials, same materials, but what materials for a driveway don't matter.
Interesting, actually, that they don't. They don't cite what materials they prefer.
I mean, they will tell you when you go to ask them what they prefer. The HBC is not shy about telling you what they prefer. It's just what is regulated. And to Anne's point, the exterior of the home is the complete purview of the Department of Interior. They'll tell you what they want the inside to be, but they have actually.
Right. Ah. Okay. Alright, any questions? Darren, you have another question or you? Okay, does anybody in the audience have a question or do you all want to make a statement or anything or? You're okay?
I just have a quick question. Now, what is the curb cut width? The existing curb cut width?
Uh, it I, I don't have a measurement of that. I think it was around twenty feet.
It's about the same as the next door neighbor.
Twenty feet, yeah.
Okay.
Pretty, about the same width.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the driveway dimensions because even though it's all the same material, it looks like you are incorporating what would be, you know, walkways in the design that you put down as well, you know. In the picture, it looks like all driveway. That's also, you know, access points for, for you all to get around.
Yeah, it's a pad to get in and out of. Does anybody on, on the screen have a question? Okay, not seeing any hands. So council, how do you want to proceed?
Action is to move.
We would, we would vote on, yes.
I guess my, I would have a point for the homeowners. Although Archuleta families. So there are potential conditions that we're thinking about here. You, you don't understand what it means, you know, and you need a different apron. Where they meet the pavers. Or putting a substrate under, but that kind of defeats the purpose of what you did by putting in permeable pavers. So like the least thing to do would be to, to put in a new apron that meets properly with the pavers. Otherwise, what's gonna happen is they're gonna be destroyed. Just want to make sure that.
Yeah, I would just sort of the
Thanks Kabir.
And the, the, which option we chose, would that be up to us or is it something that council would tell instructors to do?
We're open to either. Like, as council member Crimmins said, the concrete substrate would basically defeat the purpose of the pavers.
It would be the full area of the driveway.
Would be a full concrete apron. We would be willing to work with you that through our paving management program.
Why does it matter? Just give them an idea. Five feet maybe?
Yeah, roughly. It depends on where, you know, our contractor will come in no market. So you're looking at roughly five feet.
It's just, you know, transition from the road to the driveway.
Yeah.
Okay.
So and then what it would do is it basically braces the impact of the vehicle from the street into the road and will protect the pavers and, and right away.
Thank you.
Anyone make a motion?
Well, yeah, I, I would, I would support the, the variance. But I would prefer that, that when we write it up, we don't cite the, the street width as justifying the variance because I think a lot of streets in town are twenty-six or fewer feet and I don't want this to set a precedent for a variance when our, when your street is twenty-six feet. So if we're going to refer to the width, I would prefer to refer to it as a combination of the, the width, the curvature and the grade. Because I think that's what makes this particular section of Wheatley different, sufficient to justify variance.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Well, I guess we're just directing staff to prepare.
We would draft a resolution for the January council meeting in support of the variance request with the condition that a concrete apron or concrete substrate is installed.
With, under what you have just asked?
Yes.
Okay. Well, he just made the motion.
I'll make the motion to, to encompass what he just said.
Yeah, I'll second that. I, you didn't ask for a second.
Well, I think he needs to say it in his own words.
I, I just didn't think we need a motion to
We need a motion to direct staff.
It's okay, we'll, we'll draft a res.
Well, let's, let's take a vote on it anyway. So all those, is there a second?
Drafting a resolution for the next meeting to grant the variance.
Is there a second?
With the conditions that Matt mentioned, which are working with the contractor to do concrete or concrete substrate.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
And then when would we take it up to revise the code? Sometime in twenty-five?
How?
Don't look at me.
I got one.
Member Bartram have, have scheduled a meeting at some point in twenty twenty-five to start working on the code. We'll get it.
And that's the list.
I did, right? Let me get up. Okay, we're gonna go back to number two. So. Dennis, we're going to say a few more nice things about you. That's okay? We're gonna say a few more nice things about you if that's okay? Yeah. I, I've got at least a couple of minutes. We don't want this meeting to go.
We don't want this meeting to go too late. So I'm gonna, we're offering you a Merrill proclamation. On this day. So whereas the Kensington Business District Association, KBDA, was founded in nineteen ninety two by Dennis McCurdy. Which was dedicated to providing a forum to exchange ideas and address challenges facing the two oh eight nine five business community and. Whereas Dennis McCurdy via the KBDA tirelessly champion Kensington as an advocate for revitalization. And was instrumental in helping to establish Kensington's restaurant scene to include frankly pizza. And whereas Dennis's efforts and uh. Compassion for our community are also spearheading the Labor Day Trolley. The annual Christmas caroling event and providing gifts during the holiday season each year for a less fortunate family and. Whereas Dennis established the K-Town Food Truck Nights in twenty fifteen. Which helps spur activity along Armory and Howard avenues on Thursday evenings and. Whereas through Dennis's association. Associated Business Realty Investment Corporation, along with his two children Brett and Ria. Has been a prominent fixture of our community for over fifty years. And whereas Dennis McCurdy has decided to retire from the KBDA. As this organization will merge with the Kensington Ken, we honor Dennis for his great service to the Kensington community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the virtue and authority vested in me as the mayor of the town of Kensington. I do hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure. To recognize Dennis McCurdy on the eighteen eighteenth day of December twenty twenty four for his. Loyal advocacy, business acumen, comp- compassion and dedication towards Kensington. Tracy Furman, Mayor of the Town of Kensington. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
We also want to present you with a key to the town of Kensington.
Don't go too crazy.
Yeah. Now you gotta lock up.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
And you're no obligation to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you can.
Or you can celebrate by going to Baby Cat. Know that. Things like Baby Cat were only possible through. Strong leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Bye bye. Thank you. Oh, did you? Do you want a calendar to the, to the town?
Yes.
Did you get a town calendar? You got one? Okay.
Should we tell Kabir?
Nope.
Here doesn't have to.
She left, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna move down to number four. Uh, the Noise Library, um, the Noise Children Library renovation project. As most people know, the uh. Foundation had a bit of a hiccup. With uh, funding for the library, um, that was um, passed on to them by our. County Executive. We had a meeting today. Um, not so much in need of a letter. Right now, they are working to um, put the project into two phases. So that some additional funding can be uh, included. Uh, or not included, but could be collected from between the state, the county. Um, and donations and hopefully the town will also um, at our next meeting discuss um. Putting in some funding as well. To date, we have put in seventy five thousand dollars towards the. Towards the renovation of Noise and um. We're being asked to to consider putting in some more funding to get them up. They're currently. Two point two million dollars. Um, the foundation has two hundred thousand already that they are ready to um. Send to the county. And they hope to have. Um, whether they can move forward in the next probably. Probably next few weeks, you know, we're hitting the holiday season, so it'll probably be in um, January. We should know by the uh, our meeting in January. Which way we're going, but hopefully they'll be able to break it up in two phases. Um, start with the basement elevation as our um, excavation and putting in the elevator. And then make that a phase one and then start phase two to give time to get into the next fiscal year, which starts July one. Cause any state money or federal money, they wouldn't get until. You know, the next fiscal year. So um, the foundation is very upbeat. They think they can raise the money. They are not as. Um, they're. They are challenged, but they are not dissuaded. They are ready to go. So I think that's, that's good. So our job though will be to, um, I've asked them to keep me on the calls. Anytime they're with the county. Um, our council member Stuart, President Stuart has been. Phenomenal in keeping this going and conversation with our county executive. So we're right now in a fairly good place. But they need to find two million dollars.
I was gonna ask that. That's the gap. Yeah.
Who asked us for chipping in more? The foundation?
Uh, our county executive. He didn't say. I mean, that's up to us. No, he did not ask us for two million. As I said, we've already provided seventy five thousand dollars towards the uh, towards the renovation. Um, so I hopefully we can um. Look to see whether there's any uh, moving things around in our current budget. Um, which there's some possibilities. Um, or we just wait to the next fiscal year. Which they understand that we would have to do. But at this point, we don't necessarily need to send a letter. I think we're in a, in a place right now where um. They want, the county wants to do this. They want to fulfill their obligation. Just have to find this extra money. So.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
For being there.
Yeah.
Carrying that message.
It was, it was a, it wasn't very weight. We had sixteen people. Uh, Jared Solomon was there, our district eighteen and Eden, his um. Chief of Staff. Um, and the um. The board. And Rachel, who does the, what is it? Yeah, she was there. Uh, so I got to see her twice today. And um, so. And Rich Madalino was there as well as his deputy, the um, the new library, the new head of libraries was there. And so they, you know, they want to make this work. So felt good about that. Alright, any questions about noise? Okay, alright, well. We're moving on. Um, Matt?
Mayor Council reports.
I'm sorry. I was all excited during. Almost a resolution. Darren? Anything?
Well, I would just re- reiterate that uh. We uh. Tracy Connor and I, as well as staff, um, went to the council from our committee for Montgomery breakfast. In November. Uh, just nice to see the state leadership and. County council. Members show up and and, you know, understand there are a lot of priorities for them to work on. And then last week we went. Well, it's just Tracy and me. And 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 our attorney, um, went to the uh, my. Maryland Municipal League, Montgomery Chapter. Uh, dinner with. State representatives. So again, it's a good opportunity to just let them, talk to them, let them know what our priorities are and hear from them, what their plans are for the upcoming term. That's all.
Yeah, they talked about bills that they were going to um. Introduce something.
Yep.
So it was, yeah, it was a good meeting, actually. Small group, but good.
Yep.
So.
That's it for me.
Okay, yeah, great, thanks.
Um, just briefly, Connor and I hosted the first Parking Task Force meeting. Earlier this month, uh, we have ten uh, residents and business representatives. Joining that new ad hoc committee and we have been sharing, we shared the minutes and the agenda online, so folks can follow along. Uh, but we'll be uh, meeting again in January to keep the work moving and come for, we'll share with the council. Um, the goals and the immediate next steps, which will probably entail some research and analysis and getting some extra help with that.
We were on a call with the. Some people about parking.
Correct.
And you're probably gonna mention it, but um, have, did you talk about hiring a someone?
We did. So in the near term, uh, we will be coming up with objectives and a draft statement of work. Their consultant to help.
Okay.
Yeah, so Tracy and I did have the opportunity to meet with Jeremy uh, Souders and Ben Morgan, who Jeremy is the director. Ben is the area planner uh, for. Parking under Planning's Transportation Division, along with Kerry Sanders, Director of uh, planning for this area. Um, and what was great is we just, we have invited them to our January seventh and they have accepted, they will be there on Zoom. To talk about these very things, so we just need to um, zero in on the agenda, but. Things that we talked about were parking consultants. They've used a lot of them. They have a lot of thoughts. Um, they have already volunteered their professional support for any sort of scope of work to be drafted. Um. They talked about things that we had already touched on as far as, you know, the the. Area purview for this committee, um, but it's good to know that we are right along the same path, right? Inventoryting our current streets, looking at. Residential parking permit, looking at parking management, they have very strong feeling, so I don't wanna. Spoil the meeting, but um, for January seventh, that we will have, um, you know, some great resources from the county. To help us. Um, put together our kind of our vision for where the parking task force were.
It was kind of interesting, cause you you don't think about it, cause you know, old school is the meters. Now everything is on your phone, so your infrastructure is so much cheaper now, cause it's an app. So um. Well, you do.
Yes.
But well, you could. You know, we have to determine what we want to hire somebody to come in at night and on the weekends to do enforcements, but. He said a lot of that can be done on your phone. So uh, you know, you're not out there trying to put up meters anymore. And uh, so that, and the county is getting rid of all of their meters.
Right, so when we go to talk about parking management, their thing was, there's. Essentially zero upfront cost now. Right, you, you get the stickers from the vendor company, you put them up on, you know, on your signage. And then everything runs it, and the nice thing is, the vast majority of revenues generated go back to the municipality. And they can, uh, we talked about this, creating public-private partnerships. There is a way to track the parking by specific zones if a private. Uh, property owner was willing to allow their space to be used in a certain timeframe. We can sign that up. We can activate it in parking management and then, you know, we can decide whether or not that is, there's a financial incentive there. For those people, they can actually get a monetary benefit. Yeah, that would all be up to us to determine.
Right, the traditional parking district didn't really work, cause they use it as a means of rebuilding and constantly building. You know, parking structures and things like that. So, you know, the what, what the, their following wouldn't really work here for the traditional.
Yeah.
District.
And there's some real dirty history, which I appreciate. But um, when park, when planning changed, parking minimums in these areas. It essentially eroded the previous, I forget the term, the uh, tax that they could levy to create the revenues for further. So they're more or less now. They have to fund it and and so going to park move was what's helped to generate the. Just revenues back to those kind of parking projects.
Yeah, now you guys have a great preview of the exciting conversations we have at our Parking Task Force meeting. Yeah.
January seventh. Uh, we're selling tickets. All proceeds go back to the parking district.
Well, I think, I think when you start charging for parking too, there's a, there's a conversation to be had there. I mean, I would not want to have to go to the post office and.
You know, there's.
I know, I know, that's, I don't want people to panic, you know, just cause you hear parking cost, doesn't mean that's what's gonna be implemented. It's just gotta be part of the discussion.
Yeah, they have very, I mean, they wanna. Incentivize people to do short-term parking on streets, but how to turn that over. And then incentivize people to go to off-street parking if they want to be there longer term. And there are, there are real strategies. They talk about it as levers. There's duration and there's the rate, and there's ways to pull both to get the behavior that you want, so.
Yeah, so, very cool. Alright, thank you. I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Other than I have really enjoyed all of the holiday events in town, so thank everyone that's been doing a lot.
It has been a busy time.
Yes, there've been a lot of KHS party, light up K-Town, um, the Business District event and. The Christmas tree lighting, and now we have the menorah lighting on December twenty ninth, so thanks to everyone that has helped to make that possible.
And and I will still be doing the menorah lighting on the twenty fifth. Said you would join.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Excellent.
So five o'clock. And uh, so be sure to pack uh, Baxter's. Make sure you have a tonica sweater. Good.
Yeah.
Uh, but the big, the big uh, celebration will be on the twenty ninth.
Yes, twenty ninth at six o'clock. As usual, we will have. Donuts and hot apple cider and singing.
Okay. Okay, good. Alright, um, and that's at six, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. Right? Which got?
Um, nothing much, just to announce the two meetings, the two working group meetings. Um, many meetings, we have uh, mobility traffic. Committee and pedestrian bicycling access safety working group. Combined meeting on January thirteenth. Seven thirty here. Um, or sorry, that's, that one's on Zoom. That one's on Zoom. And then Sustainable Kensington will meet on January twenty first here. Uh, and also just to thank uh, the town staff and the crew for the leaf cleanups have been really awesome. Um, I know it got extended this week, so.
Yeah, just a couple of days.
Very helpful.
Yeah.
Thanks to the, them for that.
Yeah, they've done a great job and I don't think people realize how much. Um. Physical, they've walked nine miles one day. Yeah.
Wow.
So, and one street can fill a truck. So, you know, especially on the west side where I am, uh, on Washington or Prospect. And so, you know, while the truck is being emptied, you know, the other guys are going around and getting the piles kind of pulled back together. Um. Residents for the most part have been pretty good about not parking in front of their pile. Some, some maybe not have a choice, but for the most part, I think they got everything. Frederick Avenue was the last. Pile to get today, and so they are officially done and they cleaned out all the um, storm. So sewers, sewers too, so they're good. Yeah. Yeah, but it is definitely physically, and even the guy that's driving the truck, cause you gotta really watch. You know, as you're going down and not move too fast, so. Anyway. I, I can honestly say they are not looking forward to battery operated blowers like.
Was this a time to? Talk? Post-mortem? You know, I I I just think we ought to be considering. At least for the staff that works all day. Through two months. Moving leaves. To not opt into the county system.
Well, I think that the hardest part is that, what did, what is it, like a six, sixty or forty pounds? There's a big difference between. But when they add the two batteries on to a.
We actually, we actually purchased a battery pack this year, uh, just to kind of try it out, cause one of our gas power broke. Um, we found a, a battery pack through steel. It was forty pounds. Um, and one of the guys tried it on and said, there's no way I can have this. I can't, I can't carry this all day long. So we were able to just. Buy a smaller one, it was about twenty pounds, and the two batteries that we got plus the backups got them forty minutes.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so we're taking.
Wow.
Here, we're taking noise that can be protected against with.
Yeah.
Your protection. And substituting for it back pain, which can't be protected against.
Councilmember Crimmins, I know you spoke with.
I spoke with two.
With planning.
Uh, Montgomery County National Capital Park. Their crew, while they were cleaning up Kensington Cabin Park. And at this moment, we're taking a break, cause like these backpacks. They didn't understand why they were being asked to switch over, and so we talked about a little bit, they're like. It's, it's terrible. It's forty pounds. When you think about walking nine miles in one day. With forty pounds, both the gentlemen were just like, we get home and our backs are absolutely wrecked. And if the trade-off was this versus the noise of a uh, internal combustion engine, which we have. Sufficient safety. Protective gear for, um, they, they will be less. They're very candid about how much they. They're very candid about how much they, this was more deeply affecting them physically. Um that didn't even get into the fact that they. Well, you know, they have a dual battery pack, they said it gets them an hour and a half, which is all they can kind of take. And then they take the chance to break while they swap out, I mean, the sheer, just. The infrastructure of batteries and or mobile charging that you need to be able to complete a day. Um is, I don't think was necessarily thought through.
Yeah, and the other issue is the battery pack that we did purchase uh cannot move wet leaves. It can only move dry leaves.
But it never rains in Kensington.
Yeah, so that's kind of another issue that, you know, so this was the last year that we can use gas powered for the regulation. Um, the the only issue is it's regulated under the noise ordinance. Uh we are part of the noise ordinance, so we would.
And you can't pick and choose.
We'd have to completely opt out, which would set up other issues for the town where we would be. Required to enforce all noise complaints of the town if we were to opt out.
So, but are they, are they actually being enforced now?
So, the county, I think they're handling it the same way they handle the pesticide, where, well, it's not, it's it's just illegal to sell it right now. Next year is. So if you call, uh if you call Department of uh Environmental Protection. Who oversees the enforcement of the noise ordinance, they will show up. Uh they do have off-hours agents that can show up, or you can do a retroactive file complaint against someone if it's a neighbor or something specific. And then they'll file a complaint. Uh the council's probably familiar with it with some of the complaints that went to. Uh gigs for some of the concerts, there's a, there's a protocol for it. Construction obviously gets through that. I mean, we we don't, that's one of the issues we would have, is we don't have the staffing to do this off-hours and on weekends. If we were to opt out of the noise ordinance.
Well, can I suggest that? We don't get too ahead of ourselves. And that we, you know, unless somebody's objecting, that we explore legal options to. Pull out of the county ordinance. For the limited period of time in the fall.
Oh, for two months?
Well, I, and I I don't even know what it would look like, but but just.
And then go back in.
But yeah, I just, I I don't wanna, you know, decide to do it in mass or to do it, you know. Take narrowly tailored, I I just wanna give some thought to this, because we don't have to really resolve this.
Well, the other option is you don't pick up leaves.
I know, I.
I'm just saying, you just require everybody to bag them, or have your, your, your guy uh who you hired to take them away. I mean, that's, that's an alternative.
Or you compost.
But these are not, you know, the battery operated is not as bad. When you're just going over a sidewalk, taking away grass clippings.
Like a minor thing.
Yeah. Uh, you know, spring cleanup could be a challenge, but then again, you're not really doing the number of leaves that you are in the fall. But um, I mean, it is a very physical job.
You could also experiment, where one year you didn't do it.
Didn't collect leaves?
Yeah, and 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 measure.
Maybe we just start with.
Or that one. And learn from that.
There is one issue with that, the storm drains.
Yeah, I just wonder about that.
And and that is one of the things that we, that's why the guys go up the curb line and make sure they get them out of the storm drains and the gutter.
Yeah, because the amount of dirt that they can pull out of those uh storm drains is incredible.
And we, we did, and Alex, yeah, maybe, we did, we did give Allison Oppenheim two truckloads worth of leaves. Uh for, what was it, Ernest three, over at Ernest Memorial? And just to confirm, so the leaves do go to the Montgomery County facility and they are composted. So it's not like they're burned or anything like that. It is composted through the county. Uh so everything we collect is taken to the Brookwood facility and 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 through their process, so.
Yeah, and that takes about forty minutes. By the time you get over there, you unload and then you come back. It's about a forty minute.
Yeah.
Process, so um typically the guys are gone, moved on to the other piles to get them ready. So they can continue, you know, picking them up. So. Okay, um one of the items that you guys brought up, and I've got Sue Ellen on the call to just to talk about is the E. Uh stations for cars and the Pepco. So, uh Sue Ellen, I know you um you got the contract that we have with um with Pepco regarding the. The stations and that they should be providing us with service. Is that correct?
Uh yes, that is.
And they're not?
Here's your agreement.
Yeah. So what is, what are, are we going to write them a letter, or are we going to, they don't seem to, we got Christmas cards from them, by the way. They did manage to uh to give us all Christmas cards.
So for the benefit of everyone.
Yes.
Only three of the, only one of the four stations, electric vehicle charging stations that the town. Worked with Pepco to install are functioning right now. It's functioning, it's only one of the four.
Here, but then also.
Yeah, one of eight, sorry, and one of eight is working.
Yeah.
Um and we're having, we're struggling to get Pepco to.
And and it's natural that people assume that, you know, this is our responsibility, which it is to call Pepco. But Pepco is not showing up to fix them.
Right.
And of course, it makes us look bad. We're not able to fix their. Equipment, so it really puts staff in a really bad position. Of what to do, and you know, besides, you know, you've now lost eight parking spaces for any sort of use, because people aren't parking there.
Well, the longer that they're broken, people will just.
Well, they just don't come, they've given up.
They'll eventually get fixed and then not, they'll be continuously parked.
Right, because I I've talked to a couple of people who've come multiple times and they're not working, so why would they come back?
Yeah.
So what recourse do we have?
Well, you can certainly um request that they. Follow through their contract. My guess is, is that. Uh I think, and I recall, I believe that this was the provision of these. Charging stations was part of uh what they promised to the Public Service Commission they would do. And so there might be a way to uh use that as a way to get them to. Maintain what they put in.
And is there a way that we could find out what may have been committed to the Public Service Commission?
Yes.
Yeah, that should be public information, yeah.
Yes, and uh we can find that out, and then if something that they promised the Public Service Commission to do. Uh the term of the contract isn't over for a couple of years yet, so. Uh they're required to do that as part of um what they received. Um as compensation for providing electrical service and the rates that they got. So my recollection is that that is one of the things they promised to do. Uh to reduce um energy consumption.
So are you suggesting we write a letter to Pepco first, or we write a letter to the?
I would certainly, yeah, I would certainly write to Pepco first, give them an, you always give, you always give them the opportunity to do the right thing and follow through. And then if they don't, if they don't respond by sending somebody out, um then you take the next step. They have been spending a lot of time in outreach lately about the street lights. Uh a lot of attention to that particular issue. Um, I know they're definitely having some issues in front of the Public Service Commission, getting through the rate proceeding they're trying to complete. The one that you all joined in on years ago.
Right.
Is still going. So, um, the, I I think that they, they may be sensitive to that. And now's a good time to ask.
Okay. Alright, is that something uh you can, you and Matt can go ahead and work on, is getting that done and out the door?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I, we can give them a deadline in which we want to see some service. I don't want it to be too open-ended.
Agreed, that's the best way to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh I'm sorry, Nate, did you have anything?
No, I didn't have anything.
Okay, Connor?
Yep, just a few things, um. There are a couple of meetings today, myself, the mayor and uh Councilman Ingle about Summit Avenue Extension. Uh the first was with Chris Conklin, Montgomery County DOT, and Rachel Silverman. From the Office of O M B, as they are working on the um C I P budget for next year for the county. They were looking at Summit Avenue to fully understand it, because they have been getting the. Um communications from the County Council, the people that we have met with. To explain our U L I TAP study and the vision that we have for what Summit Avenue can do, so we gave them that presentation. Helped them to see what we see as far as what Summit Avenue can do with uh creating a new. You know, area of town as a walkable, connected uh community that helps to bridge. Kangar and Kensington together. So that was our first meeting, and then our second one. Um, one of the things that we wanted to discuss was, you know, how do we, who have been advocates as a town around affordable housing? Try and use Summit Avenue as another opportunity to find ways to bring affordable housing into. Kensington and into that area, and so we met with the Montgomery Housing Partners, M H P, their president and vice president, Rob Goldman. Stephanie Rudman, um to better understand how their organization works, they are. Uh one of the partners with the county, they were the ones that had been partnering with the county on the apartments, um what are they now, the Glen? Um so they're very familiar with Kensington, and uh they've got a number of things beyond just building, managing. Affordable housing, their community programming and outreach and engagement. Um so it was a really good conversation with them, um to help them know that this is something that we are. Trying to find a way to meet the the principles of thrive and bring these different types of housing. Both housing stock and the diversity of housing options into the town, um and I see, you know, potential for more conversations along that line, so. Uh my only other one is to, again, a small update on the Montgomery County Public School Boundary Study. Um, yeah, the, the superintendent put out a short video, four minutes. Um beginning some of the outreach and information sharing about, you know, why they're doing it. Why it is necessary, what the impact of the boundary study will be, um as an example, um the.
Is this part of bringing Woodward back, back online?
Yes, a hundred percent, um. So there are three main things that are driving the boundary study. One is. The reopening of Charles Woodward High School, and by reopening Charles Woodward. It actually affects one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine different high schools. Because of all the, the elementary schools and the, the middle schools. Now, in the video, the superintendent said. For elementary schools. They are planning no boundary changes. But it will affect middle schools and it will affect high schools, and they are driving it on four principles. Diversity is the first one. They want to have a demographic characteristics of the student population be as diverse as possible. The second is proximity. They want to um have kids attend the school closest to their home. Stability, they want to minimize the disruption to student education, so that is. Meaning they're trying to move as few students from whatever their boundary school is now to any other school. So I don't know how they balance priority two and priority three for some parts of the county, um. I don't know, I'm gonna try and show a uh my screen here. Show this one, um. This is from the county's website, and this little bar always gets in the way, here we go. So this is just the different catchment areas in high schools. That will be impacted by the opening of Charles Woodward. So as you can see, it's essentially all of downtown. Um, and the high schools are not necessarily always centrally located inside of a catchment area. In fact, Woodward, right, is not far, we all know, from Walter Johnson, and so this will be a very interesting study. Um, the fourth priority that they had was um, the. I gotta look in my notes, um fiscal responsibility, that is utili, what they're really talking about is utilization. They want to make sure that they try to balance schools, take away those schools like Walter Johnson that are way over capacity. And, you know, move kids around to the new schools being offered um to try and balance out attendance.
That's the reason why they, yeah, reopen Woodward.
And when you add to it that they are opening Crown High School. And there is a major expansion of Damascus High School that is being finished, you'll see that that affects. You know, between that and ours, eighty percent of the entire county.
Yeah.
So, this is not a small undertaking in the least.
How long do they think this will take?
So, I'm glad you asked that question, um here's what they say about their timeline. Um, in an initial scope that they put out, this is gonna be multiple years. So they're gonna begin with outreach, I think one thing they learned from the previous and the feedback from the previous boundary study analysis. Was that people felt there was insufficient outreach, so they are planning for considerable amount of outreach. For feedback and engagement events. The second is that they have put out in contract with a couple of vendors to start gathering the data, doing. Um, the data analysis, providing that in a public forum for people to be able to, you know, comb through themselves. They will then start to talk about, you know, kind of high school by high school, how to make those four principles work. Um, and then they will start to draft recommendations. The timeline I saw was for draft recommendations to be out in twenty-five. For, and and then to try and get to uh March of like twenty-six. Where they would like to try and make some decisions, because this would affect um school boundaries by school year of twenty-eight. When, you know, because Nor, as we know, Northwood is right now being held at. The new Charles Woodward High School as a holding school, while they do renovations to Northwood, that's taking a little bit longer, they have to finish, there was some debate about. Phasing the final construction of Woodward, so it just pushed that timeline out to twenty-twenty-eight, so. Uh but they're trying to make the boundaries known to everybody by, you know, the end of twenty-twenty-six.
So it sounds like from the criteria, we would stay at Parkwood, possibly go to Silver Creek. Because that's the closest.
Yeah.
And then maybe go to Einstein, because that's closest.
Yeah, I mean, as you look at the map, um this.
If that principles.
If that principles.
This little shark fin right here, that's the very northern edge of um the town of Kensington, we are right here in this yellow band right here.
Right.
And so, yeah, I mean, Kensington Parkwood, I mean, like, the other thing that I know came up in the previous analysis, at least. As spoken about by the previous superintendent, the current superintendent has not directly said this, but they, you know, their thing was. There, there's no agreements with any jurisdictions, meaning. There's nothing that says the town of Kensington as a whole goes to one cluster. If they determine that, I'm making things up, this is hypothetical, where they determine that the C S X lines. Was the line of demarcation, you know, the north part of town could go one place, south part of town could go another, if it's Connecticut Avenue, the west side of town could go one place. The east side could go another, we are over in this kind of big toe area. That depending on where the population shifts have been over the last several years, um you know. It, it will be interesting to see where we may end up. You know, we, we are close to Kensington Parkwood, we're also close to um. Uh Oakland Terrace, um we're close to Silver Creek, but there's parts of us that are also close to Newport Mill. You know, so we are by virtue of the fact that these high schools aren't like centrally located in their catchment area, we're kind of. Equidistant from a lot of the buildings.
Right.
From more to country.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from the audience on any of these uh items that the council's brought up? Um I too want to thank the staff for all the events that we've put together and um. I know Kyle Richardson, her team uh with K-Town Ladies did the um light up K-Town, and we also have coming on this Thursday, tomorrow night. Is uh the McInerney Realty, um and Mark Hudson and his. Uh fellow Realtors uh with the um caroling around the fountain, which is tomorrow. Tomorrow night at Flynn Park, if you're available. And then, of course, we'll do the um. Menorah lighting later. Okay. Right, uh let's uh keep going, um. Matt, do you wanna, I wanna go, I know uh, I know public appearances, but I I wanna get through a couple of these uh resolutions.
That's fine, yeah.
Well, in this year.
Yeah, I I I didn't have anything to report, I wanted to move down.
Okay.
Um, council before you this evening is Resolution Number R dash twenty-three dash twenty-two-four. A resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington to change the project that would receive up to eight hundred thousand dollars funding. From state bond bills two-three dash four-five-eight and two-three dash seven-zero-six. From the flats and all station development project to the acquisition of one oh four fifteen Montgomery Avenue, for reference, that's the M N T drive-through property. For public use as a parking lot and to authorize the town manager to submit a prior authorization request to the Maryland General Assembly to request this change. This is um a bond bill that the town filed back in twenty twenty-three. This is um a bond bill that the town filed back in twenty-twenty-three uh requesting two point four million dollars on behalf of the developer for the Flats and Noel Station project. Uh, unfortunately, we have not been able to come to an agreement on a long-term lease with the developer. Um, and we are requesting um.
We did not get that amount.
Yes, we did not. I'm sorry. We received eight hundred thousand of the two point four requests. So we received one-third of the funds that we requested for the public parking option. Um, staff has compiled a pre-authorization request before the Maryland State Legislature to move the funds uh from the Flats and Noel Station project for the acquisition of one oh four fifteen Montgomery Avenue. Uh, the town has a verbal agreement with MNT Bank to acquire that property uh for the appraisal amount of nine hundred and thirty thousand on July first, twenty-twenty-five. Um, this act by the legislature would allow us to allocate those funds, the eight hundred thousand, towards the acquisition of that property.
And let's let's also be clear that those funds were for public parking.
They will continue and maintain public parking access, correct?
We're changing addresses, not usage.
And Town Attorney Ferguson is here to answer any questions about the resolution.
Council, have any questions?
Uh, I just have one. Does it require a separate prior authorization request form for each bond bill? I know you guys have put them in here.
We we talked with um Shannon. Um, she said one was fine. Yeah.
And these funds would become available July one?
That's our understanding from uh Senator Zucker's um staff, yes.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience or on uh Joe?
Yes, thank you. Um, uh, the town manager referred to uh in in passing a problem with the lease of the flats. I just wondered what the long-term lease problem was. What what does that really mean?
Um, the whole lease agreement. Uh.
If I if I might, if I might respond as the negotiator, we just weren't, we weren't able to reach agreement.
Obviously, but why? What what happened? What was what was wrong? What were the sticking points? Just curious.
Just a number of them. Location, number, um approvals. There were a number. We just weren't able to reach an agreement.
And so what what are the repercussions, if any, that the town might have for uh uh for the failure to reach an agreement there?
The town had to follow uh the requirements of the Department of General Services, the Maryland State Department of General Services requires a grant agreement. The town could not enter into a grant agreement for use of the funds until it had a long-term lease or some other possessory interest in real estate to justify uh using the funds for that purpose. This new purpose uh not only allows the town the sole possessory interest, but it continues well beyond uh what a lease term would be and allows the town to provide the parking of forever if it cares to, or wish and decides to do that. So it's an ownership interest as opposed to a long-term but limited lease. It's uh in terms of uh the location, also, it's very uh a a good location to provide uh this service and it's it's doesn't require any real uh extensive work by the town because there's a park, surface parking lot already there. In in any number of ways, it's more in the public interest to do this.
And uh has there been much, I don't recall much discussion by the council, at least in public sessions, about the wisdom of of buying this site for for additional parking in the heart of town. I know there's been some passing discussion perhaps, but nothing any in any detail. Plus, you know, nine hundred thousand dollars is substantial amount of money.
Well, you can uh rest assured that there is uh an appraisal to rely on. And also, this will come before council, it's requires an ordinance.
I'm sorry, what what requires an ordinance?
The acquisition. So there will be public discussion.
I see. And that's in July or sometime, or is that's envisioned for July?
The opposing, yes.
Probably be in June.
The the verbal agreement, I guess, is what is what the town manager referred to.
Right, but none of that's, none of that's binding until it goes forward through council process.
Of course, right. How often, how how usual or unusual is this to to sort of switch gears from one project to to another? Um, a a bond project like this? I've never heard of it.
I don't, I don't know that the town is has had enough bond bills or is large enough to know what is usual or not usual. Um, and I I have no idea what any statistics on that might be. Uh, obviously, it does happen because there's a process for it uh called the prior authorization request. So it does happen. I assume frequently enough that they've got a form and a request and a process to follow when that does happen.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Furman.
You're welcome. Um, is there anyone else that has a question?
No, not not good.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions. So could we, um, council doesn't have any other questions? Can we get a motion?
Try and move that we adopt resolution number R dash twenty-twenty, uh, R dash twenty-three dash twenty-two-four. Resolution of the mayor and council to change the project for the LBI grant of eight hundred thousand dollars uh from Flats and Noel Stations to one oh four one-five Montgomery Avenue.
Hi, three seconds.
Second.
All who's in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, thank you very much. Okay, number two.
Thank you, council, and thank you, Sue Ellen. She's been very helpful on the whole process.
Hope she can hang around for the next one. That'd be great.
And um staff will fire the file the prior authorization request um this week.
Okay, and if you want to reach out to Emily Shetty as well, to let her, make sure they're in the loop.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, resolution number R dash twenty-four dash twenty-two-four is a resolution of the mayor and town council of Kensington, authorizing a contract with Ecology Services refuse and recycling for the term of ten months, beginning March first, twenty-twenty-five, and for three additional one-year options to provide weekly residential curbside food waste collection within the town, subject to review by the town attorney. Uh, we discussed this at the November council meeting at the recommendation of Sustainable Kensington. Uh, this would be a town-wide food waste collection program. Uh, we would be starting the program on March first. The initial term is for ten years. I'm sorry, ten months, sorry, ten months. Uh, sorry, ten months. Uh, with three additional one-year options, so it coincides with our existing trash brushing recycling contract with Ecology. Um, they have agreed to that. Um, there is a contract before the council and the public. Um, there we may need to negotiate a few things. Uh, we have not clarified the collection date yet. Um, and a few other, a few other options we need to look at. So that is why we added the language um to review by the town uh attorney.
So just to be clear, we have not received the actual contract.
Correct. They pro- they provided a proposal that we determined the contract off of. It was different than what we wanted to do. We wanted to work, we wanted the same contract that we have for the trash brushing recycling.
Okay.
So when our trash brushing recycling contract is out, we want this contract to be up so we could bid it out together.
Okay. Council, you have any questions?
I do. That's why we're here.
Then I worked on it. We should know the answer to this. I think we talked about it last time. I know that this is also to purchase the toders will be.
That's the next one.
But maybe I should ask the question then. If it's better than, let me know. But about the bags, you had to be searched the compostable bag. Will they be prov- will they be provided? I don't know.
So that is what I'm, one of the things I need to clarify with. And uh just for the record, Andrew Casilli, who you've met on our tour, will be joining us January eighth. Uh, he's, he, well, it's on Zoom, or at least unless you change that.
Yeah, just January.
He will be attending our January meeting. Uh, his team has reached out to us and said that they will be working with Kensington to uh provide outreach, literature, and communication to the town so everyone understands what can be taken into the bins. Uh, we are not expecting this to be a very smooth process in the beginning. It's going to probably take some time. Uh, we don't expect everyone to uh to use the bins immediately. Uh, but Andrew and his team are here to help. Um, and they will provide literature and uh staff to help us get through this.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other question?
Yeah, my questions were about the outreach and education and the time to get the toders and whether we could get everything done by March first.
Yes.
Um, knowing that some people will need, so are you anticipating that people opt in and sign up? So you know who to distribute a toter to?
So every resident is going to get a bin. Uh, so ah, so the next resolution, uh, but I'll answer it now.
Be talking about this. No, I know. I'm just, it's related to the outreach.
We have five hundred seventy-four single-family dwellings in the property that will receive a thirteen-gallon bin. Uh, we will drop them off, our public works crew will drop them off. They are expected to be delivered, assuming the council approves the next resolution uh about the first week of February. Uh, we will start the uh information session right after we met with Andrew Casilli next month. So we will probably provide in literature and communication to the residents about a month before they even receive the bins or we receive the bins. Um, March first is a Saturday, so depending on the date that we can work out with Ecology on the collection day. Uh, speaking with uh Bill and his team right now, it's looking like a Friday. Um, he's trying to figure out the team that's going to do the collection. Um, you know, you know, whether it gets moved to a Tuesday, but right now it's looking like a Friday. I don't know. That's something we need to work out on. Um, so if we, if that first collection comes on a March, in the first week of March, you know, I'm not anticipating five hundred and seventy-four residents having a compost bin. Uh, but we we don't expect that. But as the program continues and residents see the process or ask questions and 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 kind of go through the process, you know, we expect that the program will continue to expand from from the first week of March.
Okay, I'm thinking about some of the questions we got last meeting, just the basic mechanics of, well, where do I put the food waste inside my house before I do it?
This is like, it's, well, food waste is a little different, but you know, recycling, when we started recycling, what do I put on my recycling? You know, do do, I mean, I have one inside the house that I take out. Now, is this food scrap? So you don't necessarily want them in your house.
When we, when we moved from the twenty-two gallon bin to the sixty-four gallon toter on recycling, there was a a a transition period. We got a lot of pushback from the residents. We had a lot of residents that refused to accept it. We had a lot of residents that said that they re- would never have enough recycling. Obviously, that kind of worked its way through once they kind of saw what could be put in the bin.
I could roll this thing. I don't have to carry it.
So, you know, there's a process. We're we're expecting a lot of feedback and communication from the residents. Um, and and Andrew and his team will will work with us. Um. I I don't want to jump too far ahead. But in the next resolution, uh, we did leave a little bit of room on the proposal cost from toter. Uh, the reason why is they're sending me a color palette. Um, I I was gonna try to get a bin that's not green.
Right, yellow.
I wanted to go with a more neutral tone, just in case people need to put it in their house or, you know, something. There are color palette, it's a two-dollar addition per bin. Um, and um, there's also uh stamping. We have to get hot stamping, so there's a serial number on the bin, so a neighbor doesn't steal another bin. Uh, so we left a little bit of room.
Mistakenly take.
Which happens with the toders on on recycling. Um. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is unique. I mean, this is a town-wide uh collection program.
But you, it sounds like you're confident. I was, I was wondering if we could hit that March ready this day. That's really.
Yeah, like I said, the bins, well, we ordered tomorrow, assuming the resolution, um, we should have them the first week of February. We're hoping to start the education program uh the week of January eighth after we have Andrew here. And we we hope to kind of go forward and we're hoping everybody participates. So.
What is envisioned for the education program?
So he, they've provided us some base literature. Uh, it's pretty similar to what we have for the recycling. I think there's going to be a lot of questions off the base literature that we have. Uh, Councilmember, I know you, you probably saw that when we did the tour, you might have been on one of the emails with it. So I think we're going to have to send out maybe a mailing or a postcard, uh, maybe.
Which we did for recycling as well.
We can also attach it to the bin when we deliver the bin.
Yeah, we can tape it inside or on the top and people will understand.
And I also wondered, um, well, it's a little I guess there's time. We can discuss it at this Sustainable Kensington meeting in January twenty-first.
Yeah.
Um, there may be ways to like share videos, like showing people like this is what it, is how you collect your food.
Do a video of you and Connor.
Oh, yeah, I forgot. Yeah. There there could be additional outreach that neighbors do. Um, or maybe we could get some committee volunteers to help with that.
Some of Nate said, um, maybe things, I mean, if there's enough time, right, to do a quick, like, what can go in and what can't, but print it as a sticker? It gets put to the inside of the lid, so in the lid with a QR code back to all the other education.
Ecology has says that they are able to help us with a sticker and into some some kind of literature.
Every time you open it, it's a reminder of like, oh, yeah, this goes in the bin, this goes in the trash.
Ecology uh is a, is it, is our trash collector. They've been with us for six years. They are a county contractor as well. Uh, we would be their first residential food waste collection program. They have a contract with NIH um that is going to the same facility right now. So they are more than willing to work with us on this program. They want it to succeed as much as we do. Uh, you'll notice if you read the contract, um, there are some notations there to pricing, where the pricing could be decreased if we are able to get whatever our jur- neighboring jurisdiction, specifically Garrett Park or Cheltenham Chase View onboard. It's a substantial savings for us. Uh, I do know CCB has a program with Compost Crew right now and is supposed to end the end of January twenty-twenty-five. And I know Garrett Park has shown some interest in starting a food waste collection program. So there is some hope there uh that we can get them onboard as well. The benefit to Ecology is the more units they have, they're only packing one truck. It's a reduced cost for them. So it would benefit us in the long run.
I'm sure it could get you guys down in the MMC to uh talk about, get a video. They got a green screen. You can have whatever you want behind you.
Yeah.
You could be be at the beach and talking about composting. No, I think I would love to do that. I really would. I think it would be great to send that out.
We can all participate.
But but there was another municipality that did it. I think I sent you a video of that. One of the municipalities did a little, here's how you do it. Now, they had to actually take theirs. This is one of the more rural ones, but they had to actually take their composting to a central facility. We're, we're doing it right out your front door.
I guess that does make me think, I know you, this was in the town newsletter recently, but when we do send out the letter talking about the new food waste collection and the transition to remind people we have the bulk compost pickup at um, at the town. I was thinking about, you know, apartment residents and business owners and additional.
And and at least Mayor Furman and I have discussed about possibly moving the snack shack over to the MNT property once it's acquired. So it would help benefit some of our farmers market vendors. Um, so.
Yeah, it would be a better location there once we, we can do that.
And also just be easier for the vendor to.
Well, especially the farmer's market. Yeah, it's still, you still have to somehow figure out how to get, um. I'm going to use two examples because they use the the dumpster, the church parking lot would be like a Frankly Pizza and a Potomac Suites. How, because there's a lot of food waste that goes in.
Yeah.
How do you get that? And uh, you know, because a lot of it is one individual carrying whatever it is out. They don't have a means in which to get down to the you know, you'd have to throw it into a car and get it down to um the train station. So. Anyway. Okay, somehow I figured that out.
It's like Sustainable Kensington.
I know.
Going around town with a wagon.
Yellow wagon. All right, uh, is there any, are there any questions? Get to goal. Any further questions from the council before we open it up to the public? Now, any questions from the public, either in person or on the TV?
I was wondering one thing.
Uh-huh, you have to go up to the, sorry. Just quick name and a street for the record.
Yeah, Lindsay Archilata, Wheatley Street. If composting, I love the idea. I think it's amazing. We compost at home. Does the compost then come back to residents after it's been processed?
No.
No.
No. It's not like Compost Crew where you got a bag of composting. So do you want to say where it goes?
Yeah, it goes to um, it goes to a facility in Jessup where they have a bioenergy production facility with the, it's not, so it's not really compost. It's, it's actually, it's um anaer- anaerobic digestion. So they create renewable, what they call renewable natural gas, and it goes right to the well, the Baltimore gas line. It gets injected there and they have something called Digestate that's produced like a compost that they then give to, I think, give or sell at very low cost to the farmers um in in that area. Um, so those are the two things. But I don't know, I mean, I don't, I don't know if if we could talk with them at some point about getting. I don't, I don't know if, if we could talk with them at some point about getting it back. Just, I don't know if that's something we can. Yeah, and I don't, I don't even know, to be honest, if it's. I don't know if it's even, if it's even safe to handle, that probably is, because they compared it to, to like a compost.
Definitely a question we can ask Andrew, uh, and Vinny.
When he comes in.
Yeah, I mean, they, like I said, I mean, Nate, you were there, I mean, they're very excited about us kind of doing the program, so.
It's something to bring up when we, when we meet, if you want to come in January, to the meeting, let's, on Zoom, so, yeah, but thanks for the question.
Thanks for the question.
Okay, anybody else? Joe?
Yeah, uh, thanks, Mayor Furman. Uh, what if uh, people don't, townspeople don't participate in, in the program, in the waste reduction program? What, what, what then? What, what does the town envision for um, that kind of non-compliance?
Well, I think it's the same for people who don't recycle. It's, I mean, it is a, we don't force people to do, to do it.
So it's entirely voluntary and if people want to continue to, you know, throw their food waste into the trash? They can still do that, or, you know, there's no penalty?
That's what you're asking.
There's no penalty for that, I guess. Okay.
If they want to go as far as to turn their bin back in?
I think it's like the recycling container, it, it just stays with the house.
That, and that, I mean, we went through this recycling, I mean, we got a tremendous amount of pushback giving someone a sixty-four gallon toter after having a twenty-two gallon bin. I mean, we said it belongs to the house, you don't use it, you don't use it. Um, it worked, it took time, um, especially with some of our older residents that weren't used to recycling. Um, at least unless I get direction differently, I think that's how staff will handle this.
Mm-hmm.
You know, look, the bin belongs to the house, well, please, you know, we're asking you to give this a try, it's, you know, if you have questions, we're here to answer any questions and let's see how the program goes.
Joe's question made me think too. I know this came out before, but I presume that Ecology will provide data on the food waste collection tonnage, that we'll be able to see what the usage is.
We will get a tonnage report like we do with the trash and recycling now. Um, I'm not exactly sure what the Maryland um, Bio Center does on, like a ticket, like, I know what we get from the transfer station, so this might be a little different, I can kind of figure that out with Vinnie and his team. Uh, but we'll definitely get some kind of report of the tonnage of food waste that they're taking.
And that's another question we can ask.
Yeah.
Is it, and is it Ecology that's coming, or is it that?
So Ecology is the hauler.
Of course.
Yeah, uh, BioDev is the company, I'm just, so Ecology is the hauler.
Yeah.
So when we got the pricing, so uh, as, as you know, we got pricing from Compost Crew as kind of the hauler and the facility. Ecology just gave us the price as the hauler. So all they're doing is collecting the food waste and taking it to the Bioenergy Center in Jessup.
Sorry, so, no, I meant it's a January meeting, who, who is coming, is it the?
It's Andrew Casilli. Andrew Casilli is the rep for the Maryland Bioenergy.
It's the Bioenergy.
Yeah, so he is the one that oversees the facility, he's the government relations liaison.
We met him that time.
Yeah, and he, he's the one that got, him and Vinnie guided the tour.
Yeah.
And he will be able to answer all of our questions, and he's the one that's going to help us uh, with literature and uh, the program with our residents, so.
Okay.
Just one other for, um, Ecology is the hauler. On top of tonnage, you'd be great to also get um, number pickups, so we give an idea. You know, we know the number of bins that are out there, just to get a sense of utilization.
Yeah, we can probably get a general idea.
With the five hundred and seventy-four bins, how many did you actually pick something up? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah, because I know some of the feedback we got when we were talking with the other municipalities that have compost crew, like, for example, the feedback we got from Chevy Chase is only half the residents were partaking in that, and then of those residents, he's, what the town manager told me, maybe twenty-five percent were actually participating on a weekly basis.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, so, uh, like I said, in the beginning, we're, you know, this is going to take some time, and I think, I think we all realize that, so.
Yeah, well, some people are out of town, and some people forget to put it out, so, you know, there's such a reason.
And the pickup day is gonna determine a lot. I mean, I, we'll talk with Ecology and their team. Um, and maybe there's some feedback from the community that says maybe Friday is not the best day, if that ends up being the day, you know, I think Ecology would be willing to work with us, we've had a contract with them for, for many years, so, you know, if that becomes an issue, if it's Friday and, you know, we need it to be a Wednesday or Tuesday or something, I think we could work something out.
Alright, no other question?
Yes, yes, thank you. Uh, I, uh, wonder if that preferred, the hauler's preferred date of Friday is, is yet another step towards uh, uh, eliminating the Friday trash pickup. I mean, th- this is, could be seen as an incremental movement towards the, that elimination, which is something that we discussed at the meeting last month, and I believe the town manager said at last month's meeting that uh, the Friday trash pickup costs less than the food, the food waste removal plan that is envisioned, i- is that correct, or did I mishear that?
No, that's correct. Yeah, the second pickup's not that expensive on the trash collection, so.
I mean, there is one advantage to having the same day, which is behaviorally, people are already.
Used to putting things out.
And also the compost crew picks up now on Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I also think it's not adding a fourth day of pickup, so we're, we're keeping it at three.
I was wondering, uh, if the proposed contract might be improved with uh, some specific added language on performance, on Ecology's performance, perhaps section five or section nine. Uh, I, I raised this because Ecology periodically in the past has had problems with leakage, I don't know if it's oil or hydraulic fluids from their, from their trucks. And we saw this problem manifest itself most recently on Monday, the day before uh, yesterday, when uh, there were blotches or oily patches, at least throughout the south side of town, uh, up and down streets Frederick Avenue, Frederick Place, Kensington Parkway, there was an awful lot of those uh, oil-based residue droppings from the, from the uh, yard waste pickup truck. And I know the town is, the town staff is, is aware of this, and I'm just wondering if uh, the contract could be improved with uh, some specific performance languages to keep that from happening, to keep an environmental problem like that from, from, uh, from happening, because this is not the first time that Ecology has done that, and uh, it's, it's, it's an obvious problem when it does happen. And in terms of environment and sustainability, and I'm just wondering if uh, there, it would be enhancing the contract where there's specific performance language included.
Can consider it. Okay, is that it?
Well, uh, what does that mean? You consider it?
Well, I'll let the town attorney decide if she wants to put it in the contract.
Because I think there are ways of doing this without making, you know, uh, the, the contract, uh.
Joe, I gave you an answer. We need to move on.
Well, I just, I would just like to be able to finish this, this point here, because it doesn't sound like that, that uh, um, that this problem is, 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 is as recognized as it should be by the council. I mean, this is, this is not trivial stuff, what they do.
Can I ask, I don't think we, do we get, do you hear from other residents about this concern?
No, uh, only from Joe. Um, one of the issues is that we cannot confirm that it's always Ecology. It could be another vehicle.
Yeah.
Um, and that is one of the issues, you know, when we do receive a complaint from Mr. Campbell, uh, we do provide the information to Jesse, who's the route supervisor. They will evaluate the trucks. Obviously, there's issues with trucks periodically. Uh, there's also many, many trucks on our town streets. Uh, they are not the only trash truck that's on our streets.
Other companies that come through.
Other companies.
For the apartment buildings.
There's other commercial vehicles, and, you know, like I said, we provide the information to Jesse and Ecology, they evaluate the trucks. And, you know, if, if Mr. Campbell has video evidence that it's a specific Ecology truck, you know, we can address it more directly than we do now.
You know, the town staff has received uh, photographic evidence of, of this, and it was done by Ecology's truck, I saw it, I took photos in the immediate aftermath of this. I mean, it's, it's, you know, you can, you can try to apportion the blame or whatever, but it's, it's, it's Ecology, it's not all Ecology trucks, but it's occasional problem Ecology has.
So I, I would say that we've got a ten-month initial contract with options to renew. And I think all of us are going to be looking at, how is it going? Are we giving it a good faith, just, you know, effort to succeed? And for any number of reasons, we might not proceed. If they, they miss pickups, if they, people don't take advantage of it, and they just throw out their food waste, if um, the cost goes up, if, yeah. We're not locked in for a very long time. I don't, I, I think we can just listen to public feedback, including from, from Joe, and, and um, decide at ten months, do we want to go for another year?
That sounds good.
Anything else? Alright, council, I'm going to uh, make a motion. Do you have other questions?
Move that we adopt resolution number R dash twenty-four dash twenty-two four. A uh, contract with Ecology for food waste pickup. Beginning, beginning March first.
Is there a second?
Hi.
I, I second. I got ahead of myself.
All those in favor? I'll throw that out. Alright, thank you very much. Uh, last resolution, Matt?
Thank you, council. Uh, resolution number R dash twenty-five dash twenty-two four is a resolution of the mayor and town council of Kensington authorizing a contract with Waste Equip, that's the toter company, the brand toter, um, for the purchase of six hundred thirteen-gallon food waste bins. Uh, Exhibit A is the proposal from Waste, um, from Waste Equip, like I mentioned, uh, we put a little bit of room on that. Um, for the hot stamping of the bins, and also, as I mentioned, they're going to send me a color palette. Um, and I just wanted to take a look at it real quick to see if there was a more neutral color than the bright green um, option, just, just in case we run into a problem where we have residents that want to keep it in their kitchen or, you know, a little closer to the house, something that's maybe not as bright.
Like a big, bright, red, blue recycling container.
Yeah.
But at the same time, thinking about what the District of Columbia is going through, obnoxious enough that these aren't a desirable commodity to be picking up off the street.
Food waste to them, that that would be enough to make them undesirable, but.
Six hundred things were missing.
Yeah.
But to that point, with five hundred and seventy-four homes, we're buying six hundred, which only is twenty-five extra. Um, do we want to have more in reserve, given?
Some of it is storage.
Uh, wha- what I don't want to do is I don't want to be in a situation where we got a good price on six hundred, and then when we go back for another hundred, we find that the price is a whole lot higher for bin because of.
Is there a break in there somewhere that we could take advantage of?
Uh, so as you mentioned, the, the biggest issue of storage.
Right.
And we run into this with recycling, and um, we had, our initial recycling toter contract was with Ray-Rig Pacific, and we actually had to leave them because they would not allow us to acquire under a certain number of toters. Uh, toter ha- has been uh, more accommodating towards us. Although we were notified that uh, it is a third party that toter is piling this from. We can get another breakpoint number, I don't know what that is, but again, the problem we have is storage, we, we have nowhere to put them. Um, you know, so right now twenty-six bins, you know, is, is, is enough, at least on the short term, so.
Well, can I, not that I want to encourage this, but when you, I'm just curious, when you um, started recycling and provided recycling totes, and some people say, no, thanks, you keep it?
Yes.
And then you had some extras that way?
No, we made them keep it.
Oh, you still made them keep it? Okay.
Well, let's keep in mind, at least temporarily, that we do have, um, the, excuse me, the Surf Pro property that we could store some bins there as well. That'll be around for a little while.
Uh, Alex can reach back out to Blake and see if there's a breakpoint on another number. Uh, in that case, I would just ask the council to amend the contract, maybe up to twenty-five thousand. Uh, just to give us some room, and then we'll notify you what.
Do you think fifty extras? More than enough?
I just, I feel like they're, you know, they're, they, the, the big toters are on wheels, and nobody picks them up except for the, the collectors, you know, throws them down. I don't know how much breakage we have of those, I just see these as smaller and more likely to be broken or something.
Especially the handles or something.
We've had most of the toters for about twelve years now. I mean, we do have some issues with the wheels coming off and everything, but most of the time uh, we're replacing toters.
The lids, I think.
We're replacing the lids, but most of the time we're replacing toters from the annexation area. Um, or we're giving residents a second toter, which, which is a request quite often.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I can't, this looks like the same model that Compost Crew uses, and had no issues with ours. We've been using this size for a few years now.
Okay, well, let's, let's go up to six fifty if we can, just see what the price is, if there's a break there. Any other questions from the council? Any questions from uh, the people in the audience or on the screen? Okay, can we get a motion?
Move that we adopt resolution R dash twenty-five dash twenty-two four as amended to allow the town manager to purchase upwards, uh, to, to use up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for the purchasing of waste equipped toters.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Alright.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the last item on the agenda tonight is public appearances. Us the opportunity for anybody in the audience to speak on a subject that's not already on the agenda. Anybody in the audience has something to say, you may come up to the podium and just give your name and street. Don't fall on your way.
Yeah.
I'm sure that I didn't say the wrong things, I know.
Okay.
Last month, I, I called it St. Joseph's Park, and that was wrong, and so, so this will save you the opportunity, or, or the need, correct me. So, hi, my name is Alicia Toladano, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak. My family and I have lived at ten-six-zero-six Wheatley Street for just a few weeks shy of fifteen years. When we moved back to the United States in summer two thousand nine, we purposely took a short-term rental, so we could find the best place to raise our three sons. We chose Kensington. We chose it because it's a genuine community. There's a mix of longtime residents and more recent residents. Our new neighbors have a new baby, it's wonderful. There's a mix of older buildings and newer buildings, older businesses and newer businesses. Our youngest works at Frankly Pizza, so we're very happy that one opened. And we have a mix of green spaces, and of course, being in the Walter Johnson School District, at least for now. I'm here tonight to speak about the town's plan to sell Joseph's Park. I'm doing this before the January eighth meeting, at which the town plans to introduce an ordinance proposing to sell Joseph's, Joseph's Park. As a matter of principle, I cannot and will not ascribe any motives to the mayor, to the town council members, town staff, or anyone else involved in the discussions of selling Joseph's Park. I only know my feelings and my motives, so I just want you to understand that that I don't know yours, and, and so I won't tell you what they are. Town residents, including me, have provided feedback in public forums, including last month's town council meeting. This is shown in town council meeting minutes. And the majority of that feedback has been against selling Joseph's Park, my computer is doing some weird stuff, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
This was supposed to make it easier.
Yeah, technology.
You gotta do twenty-two font count and double space.
It's twelve at one hundred and forty percent because I forgot my reading glasses, all caps, because that's how we did it on the radio. So, uh, so I do appreciate the opportunity is to provide the feedback. And I do wish that it felt like a two-way dialogue. Selling Joseph's Park has been on town council meeting agendas since January twenty-two-three. Since then, the town has presented multiple supports for selling Joseph's Park. I hope this happened, but I do not recall the town saying anything positive about Joseph's Park. One thing supporting selling the park was that it is small. At the November town council meeting, residents gave feedback that being small is not necessarily a bad thing, and so as a small person for the past fifty-nine years, I was very glad to hear that. The town has also stated as further support for selling the park that nobody uses the park. Residents have stated that they use Joseph's Park since the first public meeting in early twenty-two-three. The town's response has been consistently dismissive. But I'm not a liar. My husband's not a liar. My neighbor Beth Meyer is not a liar. I believe that fellow Kensington residents who say they use the park are not liars. When we say that we go to the park, it's the truth, and it would be nice if the town could acknowledge that. The town does have a memorial park. This was mentioned at last month's meeting. It's located at a triangular intersection of busy roads. Driving past, I've never seen anyone in the park, but I know, I truly hope, but I know that there must. Driving past, I've never seen anyone in the park, but I know, I truly know, but I know that there must be people who go to the memorial park. And not seeing them doesn't mean that they don't go. The proceeds from selling Joseph's Park would defray the cost of the town's purchase of other land. People have asked about other possible sources of funding for the purchases that the town wants to make. Last month, we heard about increasing property taxes. It's not a new one, repeatedly. To the point that one of the town's residents stated that the town's response that evening was fear mongering. That's how I felt too. We also learned that the town had already placed bids to buy other property. I'm happy tonight to hear resolution R twenty-three twenty twenty-four. About changing a project with up to eight hundred thousand dollars of funding. Towards buying the M and T parking lot, which would be a great purchase for the town. And just for reference, that's about twice the estimated sale price of Joseph's Park. I I really think this is a positive step. In the town's direction, I want to acknowledge that. We have heard repeatedly that Saint Paul Park is so close by, it's only a couple of blocks away. And at the onsite meeting in early twenty twenty-three, we were told that the town's committee for green space determined that we don't need Joseph's Park. But anyone who's been to both parks knows that they're very different. The town talked about alternative green space and planting new trees. And that's wonderful. But I and other residents noted that planting new trees cannot be considered a reasonable replacement for the mature trees in Joseph's Park. We heard about safety and sidewalks, and as a mom, this is very important to me as well, even though my kids are eighteen, twenty-five, and almost twenty-seven, I'm still a mom, so I still want things to be safe. So I just wanted to note that Joseph's Park has two sides, on the short side, it meets Wheatley Street with no sidewalk. But on the long side, there is an existing sidewalk, that's the Plyers Mill side. Last month, we heard that in exchange for donating the land that the town owns, where the current Public Works building is, is part of the Summit Avenue extension. With an estimated value of nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars, the county would donate a linear park. Council member Crimmens noted that the park would be ready to use with benches and trees, and and that's a good thing. I just wanted to ask, would that linear park be on this side of Connecticut Avenue?
No.
No. So. I got to say that it safety concerns for crossing Connecticut Avenue, a multi-lane road in two directions used by commuters. Well, my concern about safety for crossing Connecticut Avenue is a heck of a lot bigger than my concern for the safety crossing Plyers Mill or our little Wheatley Street. On the whole, to me. It seems that the town decided to sell Joseph's Park a long time ago. And the public feedback is being sought, so a box can be checked on a list of things that need to happen before selling the park. But I do think at least one of you is taking public feedback seriously. Thank you. And I think some of you heard what I and other town residents are communicating. So thank you again, and that's to everyone, thank you for listening to me and for giving me this opportunity. And I hope that everyone will have a good rest of the night, and I wish you all happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your feedback.
And thank you for um coming and being here in person for a long meeting to share your thoughts. Yes, thank you.
It is.
Thank you so much.
We're what? Oh, data, I was gonna say.
I hope it's a new trend in Kensington.
Spread the word.
Is there any other uh uh items that people want to bring up, uh Joe?
Thank you, Mayor Furman, I uh. Town's woman who just spoke deserves kudos for her eloquence and her. Ability to to succinctly uh address these issues, this is an important issue, and uh. Was really glad to see that it was uh brought up this evening, even though it is very late. Uh I also would like to um echo council member Engels' remarks about the leaf pickup. Those guys did a really great job, and um I know it's not an easy task physically. But uh it's worked out well, and and the uh I guess the as-needed pickup schedule has really worked out, I was. A skeptic about that early on, I I thought that the uh. Zoned approach at different times of the of the pickup season would work better, but this is this is working out just fine, and uh. They really do um, they do great work, and it's 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 a demanding job, and and it's not a very clean job either, in in terms of the debris and everything that they. Are exposed to, so uh kudos to them as well, and just finally, a quick question, uh. Sometimes the audio is is not great on on Zoom here, and I noticed that you've taken away the uh. The uh the chat function on Zoom, so you can't really alert anybody to the fact that the the audio isn't so great. Um but nonetheless, did I hear correctly that the uh Noise Library uh project. Has a shortfall of two million dollars, is that correct?
That's correct.
And and did you explain why that is, or did you get an explanation?
The the cost of the project has gone up in the time period of which they came up with that price.
Materials.
Materials and labor and such, yes.
I I get it, but but what specifically is driving this this in increase?
Yeah, inflation.
Because I think the MOU is how many years old?
It's about five or so, maybe longer than that, maybe ten years.
I think it's nearly ten years, so I mean, the county was working off of a construction cost estimate from almost ten years ago. And that cost, when they went back for updated construction costs to, you know, this year, those costs have gone up. That's that's where the difference comes.
Okay, so what if the uh. Uh the town doesn't uh offer up the funds to clo- to cover that shortfall, is it is it going to be done, the county will do it, or what's what's the contingency here?
The contingency is it's putting it into phases, and then the foundation will raise additional money. It could come from the state, it could come from a federal earmark. They're reaching out to uh Senator Van Hollen to see if they can get an earmark, and then, but by putting it in different phases. You can see what you can get in this fiscal year, and like the town would. You know, we might be able to make some a donation, another donation this year, but more likely, it would be better to put it in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. And then that could meet the second phase.
Has the town made two donations to the project or?
Three donations totaling seventy-five thousand dollars.
Good, thank you. And um finally, I just, I really hope that uh Councilmember Crimmens was was joking when he suggested that maybe if there is a no-leaf pickup uh option. That the town embraces that uh the south side of town be the first to uh to be exposed to that option.
I said that in jest because Councilmember Lictor made the comment, so I said, start with her area of town.
I thought you said south side, and I was like.
That's where she is.
So she's kind of central town, anyway, okay, so it's a jest, uh it's it's a joke, huh, okay, good. And then, thank you.
Yeah, just don't, you know, leave my street alone.
All right, well, thank you very much, um council, I want to remind everyone that we will be meeting again on January eighth. We will be meeting by Zoom. Uh it's winter time and it's it's for staff who live very far away to already be in their homes in case there is bad weather, so I want to be prepared for that. Is there anything else on the agenda that are not on the agenda that council wants to bring up? It's wishing everybody a happy holiday and safe travels if you're going away next week. And.
Like, okay. Would you like a motion to adjourn?
It sounds like you're ready.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I haven't asked for it yet.
I made it.
Yes, I will ask for a motion to adjourn, if somebody on this side would like to give it.
I I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much, and we'll see everyone on January eighth, and hope to see some of you tomorrow night at Lind Park.